I don't hear anything, though. I can't hear anything. I wonder if I could if I.
Help us to wisely evaluate the options being presented in front of us. And Lord, help us to be unified in making the best possible decisions for our city. Help us to effectively carry them out for a long and fruitful prosperous future. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We are a republic for which it stands, one nation, one nation of liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item three, approval of city council meeting minutes dated August 3rd, 2023. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions on the meeting minutes? Okay, here you can see none. Mrs. Frank on the motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes seven zero. Item four, limited courtesy of floor. We've had no requests tonight. Um, we're going to jump around a little bit. We've got a number of people um in attendance from outside. Um, whether it's the public um or uh contractors, et cetera. Uh, we will move down to item thirteen, Mrs. Frank.
Resolutions amend 2022 professional service agreement with Cetacog.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved second.
Motion in a second. Uh, Skip, welcome, sir. Good evening.
Uh, good evening, President Yoder, members of council. Um, we bring forward tonight a what we'll call amendment number one to the 2022 contract with Cetacog. After evaluation and discussion, it was determined that there were a few items that were in that contract that could be eliminated. Here goes deduction is six thousand five hundred six thousand five hundred dollars, which would then reduce the contract total amount to fifty three thousand dollars. This was reviewed in finance and also was reviewed by Austin White. Jamie Schroder is here tonight on Zoom, and we're both here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Skip. Uh, this was reading the finance, Miss Mealy.
Uh, this item was reviewed in finance. Um, and uh, it's pretty straightforward, Mr. Many observes. Um, we are simply not utilizing this pretty much. We'd already completed some of the professional services that were in the contract with Cetacog for the 2022 budget year before um, we brought them in, um, is my understanding. Uh, in future years, uh, lest lest anyone think this is a savings year every year, in future years, um, the contract with Cetacog will remain as it was in 2022 unamended. Um, so we will be utilizing the full scope of their services um moving forward. Thanks, Adam.
All right. Thank you very much. Any comments or questions from members of council? Okay, here you see none. Mrs. Frank on the motion.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes seven zero. Thank you, Skip. Uh, we will move to item fourteen, uh, land development for Wawa, 154 Maynard Street. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second. I welcome Gary Narker. We'll knock yours out here as well. Good evening. I'm gonna turn the mic on for me. Thank you.
Good evening, President Yoder, members of council. What I present to unite is a tonight is a land development request from Farm Fest 16 Maynard Commons LLC located at 164 Maynard Street. The current land use is a vacant lot. It is located within the CC zoning district. The proposed plan is to construct a Wawa market store with gas station with gas service stations and off-street parking. The Wawa development would have access off of Maynard Street across from Pennsylvania College of Technology and easement access from the south. The proposed development would have both sewer and water provided by the municipal sewer and water authorities. We uh will serve letter I actually have in hand, so we do have the will serve letter already. The plan was reviewed by the city engineer Eric Smith-Gall of the Stormwater Authority and input from PennDOT. The plan was reviewed by LaComing County Planning and made positive recommendation for your approval. I've attached copies of their comments. Comments provided by the planning commission have been addressed and have been corrected. Copies and new stamp drawings have been provided. The city planning commission reviewed the plan and made positive recommendation with the condition that the land development plan includes a landscape plan meeting Article 1383, which the plan now basically has been presented, and I do have that, and it does meet the current zoning requirements as far as that. Um, I did reach out to PennDOT and uh some of the questions that the planning commission did have was the concern of coming off, coming up, the 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 way that it's set up coming from Hagan's Way to where they want to put their location, it was just a minor concern. Again, we did review it. I did speak with PennDOT again today, and the legal, the level of service along Maynard Street with the proposed development is acceptable to PennDOT. Um, there are some, again, some minor questions and concerns that were raised, and I believe we can address those. Um, all the cross crosswalk leads pedestrians right into an inlet grate, so it was just a matter of basically the design of that may change so that obviously it's not going to go into the inlet at that point. But again, it was positive recommendation by both the planning commission, the county. Uh, PennDOT, I did speak with them as well today, and I do have members here at this time.
Uh, thank you, Gary. Any comments, questions from members? Mrs. Katz?
Gary, in the letter, it states that they're going to have enough spaces for seventy cars and twelve uh charging stations.
It will come in the future, yes.
That'll come in the future. We we don't have the plans for the dimensions of the the store itself, do we? I I'm just curious.
We had the square footage, and it's a little over six thousand square foot.
Little over six thousand, and the seven.
What will happen is is that the land development gets approved. Then at that point, we'll begin reviewing the actual inside as far as to make sure that it meets the building code requirement as far as the structure itself.
And the seventy spaces is strictly for Wawa?
It is strictly for Wawa.
Okay. And then the other questions?
Any other comments or questions from members? Ms. Mealy?
So you said in in terms of highway occupancy, we're all fine with PennDOT?
PennDOT was it was fine with the acceptance with the acceptance of basic the level that they have as far as the lighting and everything. Like I said, there was just some minor concern, but again, it's nothing that 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 they didn't recommend for approval.
Okay, well, no, I'm just saying, I mean, this, the land development will require an HOP, right? Okay, and and we believe that that.
Same thing, it'll be uh the MPDS permit, like I said, they're all finalized review, and that's generally a condition of what we do as far as before we actual issue them the actual building permit to begin construction.
Got it. Um. Oh, it is. You're right. It is. Sorry, I I'm used to it. Right, okay.
And the reason why we reach out to PennDOT is obviously is because the way that the traffic signals go right in onto the highway there. So that was something.
And Third Street is also a PennDOT street, correct? At that, it's it's a PennDOT street there, anyway. Third Street?
Third Street. Third Street is his state, third and fourth real estate, highway state, Main Street is is local.
Main Street.
So it was just a courtesy that we reached out.
Okay, good. Um, all right, and then uh last question, and I I may be just missing the drawing, that would be my fault. Um, obviously, we're accommodating for stormwater drainage and um landscaping, et cetera.
That that is correct. And again, we did uh address this with Eric Smith-Gall. He saw the fine design and uh accepted it as well.
Okay, but also the landscaping requirements have been met.
Have everything has been met.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions, Mr. Bider?
Will traffic be allowed to turn left to go towards the highway out of this Wawa configuration?
So basically, the recommendation is is going to be is obviously is uh, let me get get up to my notes here. That they're going to remit that it would, again, they have that ability to basically turn that at a minimum, the south side driveway should be a right-in access only can be designated to discourage illegal left turns. I mean, the left turns are still gonna happen, even though there will even though there will be signage to that effect.
Time of day is really what I'm more concerned about. Um, obviously, there's going to be, you know, lunchtimes, things like that, shift changes. Um, you know, class changes at the college where you're going to have increased traffic. I just came down that particular way, and traffic was backed up from the highway all the way back to college.
There was a minor TIS traffic study that was done with that.
Thank you.
Gary.
Gary. And you?
Yep, go ahead.
Can you come up to the podium, please?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, Randy Webster, the design engineer for the project. And just to clarify or to add a little bit to that, your concerns with the traffic, the the traffic impact study was reviewed by PennDOT and uh approved by the city. And the movements that uh Mr. Nar described, I would also wanted to add that there is an easement behind the Fairfield Hotel that comes out to the traffic signal. So anybody that would want to be going south, so the left turns, getting back to the highway, they can come out there and come out at the signal. And with the future development of the vacant lots to the north, they will also have a right-of-way through that to north to First Street. So the connectivity and mobility through the whole system there should be really good for for the Wawa where it's situated.
And obviously, there will be signage to that effect, right?
Absolutely, yes. You're welcome.
Mrs. Katz?
Timeframe on this. Uh, just curious timeframe.
The client's here tonight. Uh, you can ask them. I I think they would have moved pretty quickly on it.
Yeah, please.
Good evening, John Kogan. Um, we're the developer for Wawa. Uh, the way after we have all the permits, um, the way that the uh delivery of a Wawa works is um, we prepare a pad-ready site for them, which is basically all utilities to the premises and the site to subgrade after demolition, et cetera. And then we turn the uh pad over to Wawa for them to construct the building and the gas canopy tanks, et cetera, and the and the and their own onsite improvements. So it generally speaking, it's it would the overall timeframe would be anywhere, call it like eight, nine months. You know, the weather permitting, obviously, depending on when we start and deliver the pad to them and when they can complete the work. So you know, ideally, something less than a year from when all permits are approved. Um, you know, ideally, something more like ten months. Um, and I believe are the only outstanding permit we were waiting on would be MPDS, which, you know, could be another.
Could be any day. I just talked to him uh earlier this week, and he's almost done with the technical review.
So we think we think that a store will be complete and open within 2024 yet with. That's what we'd like to think if all goes according to plan.
That's terrific. That's that's pretty quick. I do have a question for the administration. Uh, this is not, um, we don't have a city engineer to oversee this project. How are we working with that?
So this will be uh with Larson Design. They'll oversee and work with Gary and our team to make sure if there's any engineering on our side that they'll handle all of that.
But they said that they were in in the contract that we voted on, that they weren't going to be overseeing any of that.
They won't oversee, but it was any engineering questions.
So they're not providing construction management, they're providing engineering, and I don't know that we would need to provide construction management.
No, we won't need. No, don't handle Wawa. Their team will handle all the construction management components, but if there's an engineering question related to the city, Larson.
Larson will handle engineering scope if there is any.
We'll we'll reach out to them as far as like the design aspect of it and deal with that, but as far as the building and construction and everything like that, that'll be handled through the city.
And with the traffic impact study, John was still here for that, John Sander. So he actually reviewed that, approved it, and as Gary said, sent that to PennDOT out of courtesy. Um, and they were okay with it. They had a couple of suggestions, but it was fine with them.
Thank you very much, and I think we're all excited about this.
Very much so. We're excited, grateful for the partnership, and we're 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 excited to welcome you here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions, Ms. Mealy?
One last. Um, just real quick, the the one thing that's a little peculiar about Maynard Street, and and maybe it's not as much the case as I picture it being, but there is a college right across the street, and not all of those students necessarily have vehicles. Um, the Maynard Street is not well set up as a pedestrian corridor, but um talking about pedestrian access to the Wawa. Gary, because we should be providing some means for people to safely arrive there on foot.
And I I would add, I mean, in undergrad at Penn College, I mean, it's extremely common for
People that, yeah.
the on-campus residents to pop over the sheets.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I would highly suspect that this would be the case as well, because it's it's right there, and it actually might be a little bit closer.
Yeah. And with it actually being right there at the corner, it'll actually come off of First Street is where the pedestrian cross will be set up for them to come across from Penn College versus directly coming out the traffic side of Hagway, um, Hagenway.
Good. Well, we I mean, we should make sure on our end, obviously, that there's safe crossing on Maynard. Um, like perhaps a striped walkway. Um, but what I'm actually curious about is within the land development, how pedestrians can access the store from the sidewalk safely.
We do have a crosswalk uh shown on the plan.
Mm-hmm.
Um, just north of the center of the site, south of the the north entrance there going across, you'll see the two dark solid lines going across Maynard Street. I'm looking at sheet LD.
Oh, yeah, oh, no, but the site, May- Maynard Street would be on us one way or the other. I do think that that is also an exceptionally important thing, that the city make sure that there's adequately safe crossing to the facility. Um, but within the facility itself, um, is there? What will the access route for pedestrians look like once once pedestrians get to the sidewalk there outside of Wawa?
There's already a sidewalk currently in front of.
Yeah, but to get into the store across the, you know what I mean?
ADA accessible.
Okay.
For the plan.
Okay, every so everything will be ADA accessible, and there will be a designated walkway sort of through the pump area, et cetera, et cetera. So the pedestrians have a a way to go. Okay, all right, good. Um, yeah, that's, I I mean, I'm concerned that the city is responsible for accessibility in terms of making sure that, right, the sidewalks are properly constructed, yada, yada. Well, you'll be responsible for the sidewalks, but making sure that those adhere, but it's pedestrian access once they get onto the Wawa property to the facility that that concerns me. Um, because sometimes we have failed to think about that in the past. Thanks, guys.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, again, excited for the partnership. We're we're excited to welcome you here. Um, I'm excited to drink a lot of your coffee specifically. That's getting me through uh DBA programs, so.
And thank you for being here tonight.
Yep, thank you for being here. Um, all right, this is Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes seven zero. Thank you all very much. Uh, we'll move to item fifteen, certificate of appropriateness for 433 Hepburn Street. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, motion in a second. Uh, somebody has a question, and we're not. Uh, yeah, we, so I I just now noticed you. My apologies, we we closed uh discussion on the item. Um, I think you can come at the end of the meeting uh or uh during the, excuse me, uh, comments from the public at the end of the meeting to address your question. My my apologies. Uh, thank you. Um, item fifteen, Mr. Nar.
What I present is a bringing before you is a certificate of appropriateness for signage at 433 Hepburn Street. The current land use is a commercial building with offices. It is located within the central business district, which requires a certificate of appropriateness. The request is to place a business identification sign on the west side of the building. The sign meets required zoning requirements. The sign will be constructed of ACM, which is an aluminum sandwich PVC. It is direct direct printed to and laminated for protection of the ink. This was reviewed by the city planning commission and made positive recommendation for your approval.
All right, um, any comments or questions? Okay, here you see none. This is Frank on the motion for item fifteen.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes seven zero. We'll move to item sixteen. Certificate of appropriateness, 175 Pine Street. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, Mr. Nar.
This is a certificate of appropriateness as well for signage at 175 Pine Street. The current land use is a commercial building with offices. It is located within the central business district zoning district. The request is to place a business identification sign on the west side of the building. It does meet the zoning requirements. The sign will be constructed of fabricated LED illuminated channel letters. They will be mounted on an aluminum raceway where the electrical wires from each letter will be encapsulated. Power will be pulled at one exterior site. The channel letters will have plastic acrylic faces to them and exterior grade translucent vinyl for color. The raceway will be painted to match the building color. The city planning commission did review the plan and made positive recommendations for your approval.
Thank you, Gary. Um, are there any comments or questions on this certificate of appropriateness? Okay, here you see none. Mrs. Frank on the motion.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes seven zero. We'll move to item twelve, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution Susquehanna Riverwalk Extension.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, Mr. Nar.
Again, I present to you, uh, the resolution is to authorize PennDOT to request alt alterations at both Maynard Street and Arch Street Railroad crossings. The Susquehanna Riverwalk extension will connect the current riverwalk located along the Susquehanna. The Riverwalk extension will begin at Maynard Street and go north, turning left prior to the Sheetz property and run along the former rail area behind Pennsylvania College of Technology. Turning south, yeah, turning north up Rose Street and following along the southern area of West Fourth Street, it will cross Third prior to the LaComing County Transfer Station, going behind River Valley Transit and along the Elm Park area. It will cross a railway bridge over LaComing Creek connecting to Arch Street. There will be a spur running south after crossing LaComing Creek to connect uh to Susquehanna State Park. This extension is identified as one of PA's top ten trail gaps in DCNR's state outdoor recreation plan. The budget and financing comes from LaComing County and DCNR grants both Phase One and both Phase Two. This project supports tourism, economic development, promotes healthy, active lifestyles, and provides safe pedestrian and bike routes within our community.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Nar. And he just went to, excuse me, sorry. Yes, this went to finance, Ms. Mealy, or no?
No, this actually went to public safety. This went through the planning commission.
This went to public safety?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey, I knew it on some. I was sorry. That's what happens when you look something up quick. Mr. Mackey.
Uh, I mean, Gary, Gary says it all. No, I just, I mean, the majority of our discussion just was some clarification on the route that the bike uh that the bike path will take. Um, I think it's great that there is a connector into Newbury there, so folks in Newbury have the ability to access the trail. Um, but outside of that, no, I just um really glad to see that this is getting done. This is pretty exciting stuff. Uh, I mean, that's, yeah, I mean, I'll I'll open it up to anybody else in public safety.
No, this is, I think it's going to be a great, a great addition. Like like Mr. Nord said, it is, it's a gap that a lot of people have been anxious to see. Uh, I'm very happy that now I could take the bike trail all the way down to New Trail.
No comment. I'm just kidding.
Don't tell me that. Don't tell me that, Ben.
Um, I'm just, I'm just kidding. Uh, Gary, who's who's building this? Do you know?
Uh, that's still under the design phase.
Okay, we we don't know yet, so it's it's conceptual. Ms. Mealy?
And that's what I was going to say. I I see the construction 2024 to 2026. Does that mean that any of that funding exists right now?
As a requirement, this, that's why we're doing a resolution so that they can finalize the grants.
Okay, but they actually think they've gotten the grants? This is just a finalizing the grants?
This is kind of like a formality to line to line everything up.
Okay, well, that'd be awesome. Um, I I believe if if I'm not wrong, that the the end goal of this is to connect to the rail trail up Pine Creek, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Um, are they getting any closer to us than Jersey Shore on that end? They're not, right? It's still terminated in Jersey Shore. Anybody else know? But yeah, anyway.
I can tell you all the way up through Woodward, basically, they're working with that through that township, because I deal I deal with that.
Yeah. Um, anyway, I know that there's been discussion on this on the Watts Committee for the last ten years or so, so I'm I'm glad to see it finally come into fruition.
The way the way the design ever does is actually go all the way up to New York.
Right. Um, yeah, I think they're ba- basically connecting dots, right, all the way up to New York State. Um, which is super exciting, and and will someday, I think, make for a really uh remarkable tourism bonus for the for the city, I hope, too. Thanks, Gary.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, here you see none. Mrs. Frank on the motion for item twelve.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes seven zero. We'll move to item eleven, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution for ADA and electrical re- review.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved second.
Motion in a second, Mr. Nar.
Good evening. What this resolution is to do is to streamline both the ADA and electrical utilities utilizing Berriise. The resolu- the resolution designates Berriise and Associates as required ADA and electrical inspection plan review for the UCC within the city. Currently, the city actually is, since I've been here for over twelve years, the city's never done electrical inspections and has never done ADA. That always has going out to um several different third-party agencies. What I'm trying to do, since I have actually taken over with this, is streamline that and bring some of that stuff in-house so that it's all one entity. So again, what it is, is to further help with some of the developers um so that we're not waiting for certain different documentation and things along that line. The current system in place allows the developers, the contractors, to choose several different options. The request streamlines development and permit process as we currently use Berriise to review several of our other prop our our goals. Berriise is our sole reviewer for all aspects of review and reviews as well as inspections to include footing, concrete, drywall, framing, and obviously the issue of the certificate of occupancy, just to name a few. Again, the only two areas that we do not do as far as inspection and review is the ADA as well as electrical. This will, this resolution will eliminate the waiting for developers and contracts to have other groups come in, perform the electrical inspections as well as review and provide us with documentation to show that they've passed all the inspections in order for us to issue a certificate of occupancy. It's just streamlined. Basically, what it is, is it's kind of taking four or five cooks out of the kitchen and just streamlined. It's just so that we have one individual that basically would oversee that. It would stop the waiting for occupancy allowances when we come to several of our larger projects. I've noticed that what we've had to do is basically wait for electric plans to be reviewed by other entities as we're already in the middle of the development stage of that, and then at the very end of it, we've got to wait, wait till we have a certificate as far as our stamp drawings from ADA as well as electrical inspections to say, hey, it meets all that so that we can complete our certificate of occupancy and allow these entities to utilize the facilities. That's what this is. That's what this is doing for the city. This ultimately streamlines all the requirements set forth by the UCC and labor and industry requirements as well. In addition, when electrical and electrical and ADA actually goes out there, a lot of times we are tracking those type of documents down to make sure that we have them and we get nothing out of it. What this is doing, bringing Berriise in-house and having them as a streamlined process, the city will basically have administrative fee of twenty percent on that, because we are doing a lot of the work, pulling them together, making sure that when there's done, we have stamped engineer drawings, all the inspections are met, and that's the purpose that we're light that I would like to utilize Berriise to streamline everything for the city.
Thank you very much, Gary. This was also reviewed in public safety?
It was, yes. Uh, there was a fair amount of discussion about this proposal and how having all of this under one roof could possibly affect the businesses in the city of Williamsport. Uh, and I will defer to Councilman Pelisi to elaborate.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey. So, um, as much as I appreciate Mr. Nar wanting to streamline and make everything efficient, um, bringing everything um in. um, bringing everything, um, in and being done and conducted by one firm, um, I don't, ultimately, I don't think that this is a good idea for several reasons. One, um, every single one of our local inspectors, this would now be taking the work away from them. It'd be putting it into the, the hands of a firm that is not local, a firm that doesn't know the business owners, a firm that doesn't know the people, um, or the property, it doesn't know the history. So we'd be taking work away from them. Um, tonight, we actually have a gentleman in our audience that has been one of the city's premier electrical inspectors for, dare I say, decades.
Mm-hmm.
Quite a while that everybody knows he does an amazing job. You can call him, he's there, his work is beyond question. Um, and doing this is, is taking work directly away from him. The other thing that I have an issue with is the rates. Um, again, uh, if, if I need an electrical inspection for my breaker box for a service, I make a phone call. I have this gentleman come up, he checks my breaker box, it costs me eighty-five dollars. Under this plan for residential, not over two hundred and twenty-five amps, it's gonna cost me over fifty percent more, a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Plus a twenty percent administration fee on top of that. Now, ultimately, I am, I've always advocated for ways and avenues for the city to find additional revenues. There would be a twenty percent admini- admini- administration fee, my apologies, um, that we would collect money on. A fear that I personally have is that as the intention for this is, at its core, I think is good because we would be able to try and, and get everything in-house in one office, um, and try to really crack down on some of, some of the violators that we have in the city as far as contractors go that try to circumvent the system. I think by implementing this rate charge with, with the increased fees, um, would only make that worse. I think in an effort to avoid paying over fifty percent higher charges, you're gonna see a lot more work being done, tried or attempted to be done, uh, without filing for the appropriate permits, without doing those things. Again, um, I've spoken to a myriad of contractors, developers, business owners, um, that with all due respect, Mr. Nar, I, they would disagree that, um, they, they do not believe that this would be beneficial to them, their projects. Um, not that it would be taking away any form of safety standard, but that it would ultimately, you are giving one hundred percent of the authority and, and everything passed through, like Mr. Nord said, it will all be in one office. At its core, it's meant to streamline things. But you are now taking away everybody's choice of who they know, who they trust, who they want to work with, um, and mandating that it goes through one person. And then along on top of that, again, with, you're taking the work out of taking away the work of the inspectors that have been providing that service to our city for how many years? Uh, at least thirty years? Maybe forty years? Yeah. So for those reasons alone, I don't, I don't think that this is a good idea. Uh, at the very least, I would urge council to table it for more discussion. Um, but it, yeah. That's, that, uh, I'll, I'll rest my case. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pelisi. Um, any, any comments, questions, I guess, just between Ms. Mealy?
Um, I think I would say that I, well, I would prefer to see it tabled at this time. I don't have any, um, objection to Gary's whole idea of streamlining the process, but I think that we would need to allow room within that for we, the city could have, could provide these services, Berri I set could provide these services through the city and offer to streamline the process for new development. But I don't think that we can remove the ability to choose other corporations that exist within the city already from, you know, um, it is, I, I'm, I'm not sure that creating a monopoly in this situation is, is a wise choice for the, for the citizens of Williamsport, um, because it doesn't seem like it's going to necessarily drive down costs, um, and, uh, I, anyway, I, I I would say, I would agree with Vince at least. I don't, I don't know that I'd be inclined to vote it down, but I would be inclined to wait a couple of weeks and see if we could understand a little bit better the concerns of the business community, because I've gotten some feedback as well. Um, and the, um, the impact that this would have on the sort of flow of projects through the, through the city. Um, I think if we could provide utilizing the city's, um, inspector as, uh, you know, for all facets of the plan as an option, that would obviously, we could say, hey, look, this is gonna be the fastest way for you to get this done, right? Um, but I don't know that it's right. If somebody says, hey, I'd rather save a couple of bucks and get it done at my own speed, you can say, okay, well, that's up to you. You know, um, that's your call. And, uh, I, I, I think I'd prefer to see it operate that way, at least for a while, and see, see how that works than, than see us designate one person within the entire city. Um, Mr. Nar, the one question that I would have is, are there other municipalities around us that have done this that have a single electrical inspector and ADA? Inspector?
Well, and, and again, when you get into that, most of your other, for example, Loyal Sock, Loyal Sock has one person that basically does that because he's employed as that entity, so that they don't have those out there. Um, and again, what the, the purpose of this was, and I'm gladly basically put a little bit more package together and explain to you the true, and, and a true reason that we're looking to do this as far as for future development for like projects that are getting ready to come in, such as Old City, the Wawa, and things of that nature, and show how it'd be more effective for the city to basically utilize a, a specific side, a set of systems. So I, I have no problem if you requesting to table this and put something a little bit more substantial together so that you understand the full scope of what we're trying to accomplish.
Yeah, I think, I think I'd certainly like to understand it a little better, um, before we move forward on it. Um, and I would particularly be interested. So Loyal Sock has a single electrical inspector who's an employee of Loyal Sock, you're saying?
I believe they have an inspector that basically reviews all of that type of, of, of type of that work. And again, when you get into this, when you get into some of them, for even, for example, within the city, what we do is there's a list of, and they come from the Department of Labor and Industry, they have to be certified by the Department of Labor and Industry as inspectors in order to basically for us to even have them on our electric inspector list. And, and, and one of the gentlemen's that we're referring to basically has been a long time. Some of the other ones are corporations such as Code Inspection, and Commonwealth of those type of entities where you had that as an option. And again, what we're trying to do is streamline, so we have all the documents here in-house. We review it in-house, it's reviewed, we don't have to worry about getting different documentation, waiting for this and that to be reviewed inspection. So when they come in and they have a building plan for us, they have everything right there and we can review and look at everything versus say, okay, we'll do this, send this paperwork out here, send this paperwork out there and have them do the inspections. It's the same thing when it comes to the actual building. So if you're downtown and you're doing a building, we don't do the electrical reviews, we don't do the ADA, so now we have to wait a day till they get an inspector that they choose to come in and do this type of thing. This way it's done in-house, streams like it, streamlines everything. And I can present all that to you later data if you request it.
I, I would also recommend, I, I guess, what we'll ask. I understand it from a couple of people that I spoke to within the last little bit is that this is not something that the business community wants to see happen. And so perhaps we, I, I'm, I'm just trying to understand the breakdown there of, um, if they don't feel as though it's impeding the speed with which they make things happen, but you feel as though it's slowing things down. Um, you know what I mean? I'm trying to understand the discrepancy there. So, um, but yeah, if you can, if you can give us some of that information, I'd also be curious. Um, and I suppose that I could call out as well, but I'd be curious to know what, what say Loyal Sock is charging for, you know, these various services, right?
Their, their minimum fee is seventy-five dollars.
Okay.
And that's for residential. And then you go up to commercial, they obvi- obviously their permit fees from, and, and ranges um, all the way up. And it says permit fee with additional charges can be well over two hundred dollars and it's based off of sometimes square footage. And what I will also do is I'll present to you, to you with packages as well, that'll have other third-class cities like us and how they utilize their system and what their fees are made up.
Yeah, I think, right, I, yeah, I mean, I, I would just, yeah, prefer what I'm always wary of seeing us do, I guess, is something where people are like, well, I can get it, you know, cheaper in Loyal Sock.
And, and that's why, that's why I always refer to third-class cities. So I'll pull those other third-class cities and put that together.
Um, right, exactly. All right, thanks. So I guess that's my feeling, Adams. I'd rather see us table this, because it seems as though there's a bit more thinking to do here, but I don't know how members of council.
Mrs. Scotts.
And Gary, thank you for, for, you know, uh, bringing this to us. But we have, uh, I think most of us have gotten phone calls in the last couple of days of people who own the businesses, you know, and so on and so forth. Uh, the list that we have always had of electrical people has been wonderful. And these are people who have worked in the city for a good many years. And they know the city, they know the people, they know, they also know the businesses and what they're, they're working with. And I don't think I've heard anybody say a delay in, in what's going on as far as the project moving forward. Um, I just, you know, we know we have faith and trust in the way it's been done. You're gonna bring a company in here that's from Wilkes-Barre, and they are not familiar with our city. Our city is entirely different than what they work within Wilkes-Barre. I know this, you said, and I asked this question, that they've been working with this here for a year. Um, a year trying to, uh, know what's going on with everybody is entirely different than people that have working, working with this for decades. And, um, I agree with Liz and, and Vince that I would like to see this tabled because there has been such faith in everybody that has been working with this, with the list for so many years. And to take that away, uh, we're not, you know, it just, it, it creates a problem, it really does. So I think we should, you know, at least.
And what I'd, and what I'd like to add to that, as far as the electrical inspectors that we do, in other words, when someone comes in, there's a list that we provide them that we utilize, um, and I'm not gonna name names, but they're from Montgomery, New Columbia, Cogan Station, Hamara, Montgomery, PA, and Dubois. They're the areas, so it's not just within our region that we're utilizing those inspectors. Again, electrician come in and do the work, but we have to go by the Department of Labor and Industry who's certified in order to do that. And that's what we're trying to do.
And these people, they're really good.
Yeah.
Because I've, I've, I've.
I understand that.
And they've been really good.
So I'm hearing a desire to table. Somebody wanna make that motion?
I'd make a motion to table.
Motion? In a second. Mr. Allison.
Well, we, we just tabled it before I got chance to.
No, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't vote on it yet. That's okay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Just a couple, um, and, and I agree with Ms. Mealy and the other sentiments that have expressed, um, that, um, if, if we want to add this to the mix, then that can be used, um, but not exclusively, you know, that, that is still open to others. But, um, if this has, I've been thinking about this in con- in the context of our codes department and my recollection is we brought very isolated because we didn't have, because Joe Girardi had left. So we, we had a gap there that we needed filled by someone who was, um, certified to, to do brand-new commercial inspection. Um, my understanding, I think at that time, and subsequent to that, was that this was gonna be temporary and that we were gonna fill our codes department back up. And I'm totally committed to having a local codes department and and that, ahead of that department. We've asked Mr. Nar to, to fill in there and, and take that over. But I, again, I, I did not see that as, um, a permanent thing. The, to, to dump everything in his lap, I, I think we need a, a department head for codes, and I think we need a fully-staffed codes department. And I see this, uh, this particular issue in the context of that whole. So that's where I stand. Um, and I'm in favor of tabling tonight. Thanks.
Well said. Thank you, Mr. Allison. So, um, Ms. Mealy.
Kind of a small point, but I'm just looking at Loyal Sock's, uh, building permit fee and, um, and noting that they have a, uh, lead fee, which I don't believe we have in our ordinance.
We don't, and again, like I said, currently, we don't have administrative fees or anything, so.
Right, I mean, it, I, what I'm hearing is partly that it seems as though we're doing a bunch of extra work in the department to collect information from a variety of sources, correct, when someone utilizes outside inspectors? And perhaps we need to figure out a way to charge for that sort of service that we're providing in the Department of Unifying and Application. Uh, and maybe that's what I'm hearing, but, you know, I'm, I'm just trying to kind of think. And also what I'm hearing you say is that a lot of people aren't getting, aren't necessarily getting permits in the way that they should. And, you know, I, I know that we've used with the, um, certificate of appropriateness, we used a little bit of a slap on the wrist there in the terms of you don't get it before you do the work, then you pay a double permit fee, right? Um, it looks as though, um, in some cases in Loyal Sock, that's actually, you pay significantly more than a double permit fee, which putting that out there is, maybe think that we should also be examining just in terms of generating income related to the level of hassle that, that, you know, if we're chasing somebody down for a permit after the fact, right? Um, then, that, you know, that, that helps us keep that under control. Anyway, thanks, Gary.
So current motion to table, leave a motion in a second. Any other further comments or questions related to the motion to table?
Councilman Yoder.
Yes.
Just real quick to Councilman Allison's point, we have had it posted, we continue to have it posted, but we just haven't got, received any applications that we're even remotely qualified to be the head. So we'll continue to keep opposing and going down that route with the intent of filling, but we just haven't had any with it remotely close to the qualification. So just as an FYI to that.
Thank you, Mayor Slaughter. That's helpful.
It, it, when you get into it, it really is a tough that type, this type of position as far as the building code is to have all of those criterias and inspection certificates under the Department of Labor and Industry. There's a lot of people out there that have one or two inspectors and reviewers fees, but they don't have a complete package of what basically it takes to be a building code official that not only maybe just administratively do the paperwork, but it's the inspection, it's the reviewing of the, in detail reviewing of the plans for big projects like Old City and the Wawa and things of that nature.
Thank you, Gary. All right. No other comments or questions? This is Frank on the motion to table.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yeah.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion to table passes seven zero. Thank you, Gary. Um, we're gonna jump up to item seven, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution to appoint Director of Finance.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Sorry. Motion in a second. I will welcome Mayor Slaughter to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening, President Yoder, Vice President Katz, members of council and the administration. What you have before you is a resolution to appoint a Director of Finance. As you all know, uh, we have been working on this process for quite some time now. Um, and tonight, uh, for your consideration, is Heather Jacoby who comes, uh, to us with various experience, uh, some of it actually in the public sector, um, to fill this role as the Director of Finance. Um, as you all are well aware, Tracy, uh, will continue to fill in, uh, with us uh, till the end of the year as it's budgeted, uh, working alongside, uh, pending approval tonight, working alongside Mr. Kobe, um, as we implement the new financial software, HR software, payroll software, et cetera, as we continue to do that, uh, and bringing up the speed on all the other items that we're working on, uh, within the Finance Department. Um, she was unable to be here Tuesday due to her current, uh, job responsibilities, uh, but it was reviewed in Finance. Um, and she is, of course, here this evening, uh, for questions you have for her.
Thank you, Mayor Slaughter. This was reviewed in Finance, Ms. Mealy?
Uh, yes, this item, uh, was reviewed in Finance and we were excited to see that we have, um, a, uh, uh, a hire lined up in the Finance Department. Um, I think that most of the discussion, um, centered more or less amount around Mr. Kobe's, uh, resume. So obviously tonight's, um, tonight, me- meeting Mr. Kobe will be exceptionally helpful. Hello, how are you? Um, and then, um, you know, se- secondarily, we, uh, we discussed whether or not in, um, Ms. Rash's opinion and Tracy's opinion, um, we were in a position in the Finance Department where we were fully staffed for the day-to-day and annual needs of the city with, uh, with this hire. Um, and, uh, and Tracy said that, uh, once she gets all these friggin audits out of the way, right? That twenty twenty-three looks, looks pretty good, um, in terms of record-keeping. And once the audits and the records management and the, and the financial management software are in place, um, she thinks that, that, that three people plus the, plus a part-time, um, person in the Finance Department is an adequate staff. for, um, our financial needs moving forward. Um, anyway. Uh, the real question, question however is who is Heather Jacoby? Hi.
Good evening, President Yoder and council members. I'm Heather Jacoby. Uh, I grew up in Northern Tioga County, a little town up there. I attended Bloomsburg University, graduated with a bachelor's science degree in business administration. I moved to the Philadelphia area and was hired by a manufacturing firm where they allowed me to take additional accounting courses. Because that's the field that I went in and that's the field that I stuck in. Um, after several years there, I moved back to the Bloomsburg area. Uh, eventually getting a job with the town of Bloomsburg initially as the finance specialist. And then later as the, uh, Director of Finance with them. It was a job that I truly enjoyed doing. Um, after administration had changed, I thought it was time for me to move on from there. Um, I also have experience working, uh, I worked for Luzern County Head Start uh, as an accountant there. Uh, so I have nonprofit experience. Um, and I'm just looking to get back into municipal government accounting. Uh, it's something that I enjoy doing.
Okay. Well, nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Glad you're here. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Jacoby, right?
Yes.
Yep. I've always got questions. I'm also very glad you're here. Uh, the one, one of the main questions I would have is, um, uh, as you, uh, have undoubtedly already been informed, we have uh, an exiting financial software that we're currently using that is, uh, I think, um, the term antiquated would be generous. Um, and we are about to bring in new financial software or the process of implementing that at this point, correct? Tracy, um, are you familiar with Springbrook?
I am not familiar with Springbrook. I am familiar with your antiquated. That's what the town of Bloomsburg is. So I am familiar with Fundware, um, but no, I, I don't have any experience with Springbrook.
Okay. And what, um, what financial softwares have you used aside from Fundware? That familiarity will clearly serve you, serve you well when we need to extract information off it. But, uh, but what other financial softwares have you used in other?
Uh, I've, I've used Blackbaud, uh, SAP, uh, Great Plains. Um, we, AS four hundred.
Got it.
So.
And Tracy, I think is pretty familiar with about every kind of financial software out there. Um, what, probably wasn't familiar with Fundware until now, huh, Tracy? Um, it, uh, um, are any of those close enough to, to what Springbrook will bring to the table that there should be a relatively easy transition?
Springbrook's really very intuitive. So if you can operate an accounting system, you can operate Springbrook. It's got a lot of drill down, a lot of, uh, reporting options that are really, uh, for an accountant, really easy to follow.
Okay. Got it. Um, all right. Uh, then it sounds like you should be okay. Um, and, uh, what was I going to say? Um, uh, you obviously, um, I, I believe the town of Bloomsburg, we looked it up, Tracy looked it up, has about a ten million dollar budget right now. But so anyway, so you've worked with maybe not budgets, quite the scope of the cities, but, but budgets within the same range, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and did the town of Bloomsburg, do they have, we, we currently have a line item budget. I mean, obviously, once you're in the, once you're on the accounting end of it, everything's line item anyway, but, um, but, uh, have you worked with a, it makes, it makes our, uh, end of year budget sessions pretty complex. Have you, have you worked on things like that with Bloomsburg?
Yes, I have.
All right. Um, excellent. Thank you. Uh, I don't think that's everything I have for right now.
Uh, a, a couple of questions for you, and I think kind of to dive into, I think, kind of what Liz was talking about. Um, when you were Director of Finance with the town of Bloomsburg. Um, can you just let maybe, I guess, tell me a little bit about your level of involvement in developing the budget, managing that budget development process? Um, you know, formally, the, the mayor does that and presents it to council every year, but I think informally historically, and this is probably a good practice. I think this position has really led that. Um, and, and when I say lead that, you know, they're not only managing, actually putting everything together, all that kind of stuff. But I think they're interacting with different department heads, not only understanding what they need, but kind of um, just the intricacies that go along with, um, you know, understanding what they need versus what we actually have. Um, I, I'm, I'm going to guess there's probably some level of, you know, no. Um, that, that will probably go in that in conjunction with the mayor. Um, and I think historically, you know, this kind of position has all of our department heads are, are equal, right? Um, but I think informally, this position has always maybe been the, um, the, 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 the greatest among equals, if that makes any kind of sense. So can you just speak to a little bit about maybe your experience in that dynamic in Bloomsburg? Um, what your involvement in their budget process look like, your experience specifically kind of in that lens?
Well, for the budget, uh, I would always start in July and I would send out forms for all the department leaders, managers to fill out what they wanted for the next year, whether it be equipment or personnel. Um, I would ask for that back usually around the beginning of August. And then I would start putting the budget together, uh, at that time. And I put everybody's request in. And after the first budget meeting, uh, the department managers would present their cases to say to council. How they justified or needed the, the personnel or the equipment. And then we would just go down from there, uh, at all the rest of the budget meetings until we got to a workable plan. In the meantime, I was gathering other information regarding the taxes and other healthcare and other costs that would implement the budget. And I would just keep bringing that to the council and to the budget meetings. Until we got it down to where everybody was satisfied.
Um, th- thank you. That, that's, that's certainly helpful. Um, and then I guess maybe to kind of tie in with that, I think something that we've also had in the past that, that, that's been helpful. And I think might be a critical part of this role. So, um, that's kind of maybe an inward facing question, right? Um, I think this role has a lot outward facing as well, whether we're interacting with, um, banking institutions, actual business. Um, you know, and, and even when we're looking at development, I think there's a part of this role that kind of looks at, well, how's this actually going to impact our budget? Um, what are some different things that we can actually do to aid, help that kind of thing? Um, to what level are you, um, experienced or have you had any kind of involvement in those types of scope of work? Um, whether it's a Director of Finance at the town of Bloomsburg, um, anything like that.
Uh, while at the town, I worked, uh, right alongside the town administrator and we were always looking out for what was going to happen next. Um, things that you can never plan on, but we just tried to keep in the back of our minds what might happen. Um, I don't think anybody saw COVID coming, but that was a pretty big hit to a lot of businesses and to government itself. So, um, we just try to keep a strategic plan moving forward. Um, when you're preparing the budget for Bloomsburg, uh, we were trying to look out beyond just the year. We were trying to look at like a three-year plan of where we kind of sell ourselves, um, going forward. To get a better idea of, uh, what might be needed, uh, vehicles or more staffing or better equipment, um, renovations to different buildings. Uh, so I am familiar with, uh, looking at the big picture, uh, contacting banks, uh, trying to get better investment options.
Excellent. Um, and, and one other question. So, I mean, it's, I think it's been a little bit since you were the Finance Director at the town of Bloomsburg. Um, a lot changes pretty fast. Um, do you remember, you know, just general fiscal situation of the town when you were there? Um, budget health, was it looking okay? Surplus deficit? If so, what levels, what things were you doing to, I think, maybe, um, aid either building your surplus, minimizing deficit, those kinds of things. And I ask that, um, because with, with us uniquely, and I, you know, this is something you're going to learn. It's not unique to us. It's a generally a third-class city issue. I mean, we, um, our, our revenue grows a lot slower than our cost, especially now with the inflationary environment we've lived through with COVID. And, um, you know, we're, we're always under the gun every year. Um, I think we're probably around a three-ish million dollar deficit, um, currently. That's really the root of that question. So can you kind of speak to that? Um, from your experience in, at the town of Bloomsburg as well?
Uh, at the town, um, but like you said, it, we try to keep the taxes low for our residents. And, uh, but the expenses just kept going up, uh, no matter what you do. Uh, we balance the budget, um, most years, or we dipped into, um, our reserves. Um, a few times, but for the most part, we were able to keep a stable sturdy budget, um, without having to lose any of the, uh, materials that the, the department managers wanted, or, you know, services that they wanted to provide for the residents of Bloomsburg.
Gosh, thank you very much for answering my, um, maybe out of love field questions, but I'm willing. This is, this is a pretty, I don't want to say unique role, but a pretty important run for, for how we operate and what we do. So does anybody else have any questions? Mr. Mackey.
Uh, Ms. Jacoby, welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, I want to say welcome to Williamsport. Do you currently live in Berwick? Is that correct?
I, my, my address is Berwick. I, I live outside of Berwick.
Okay. And is your, not, that, I'm just curious, is your attention to commute back and forth every day?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and where, you, you're going to find out that I ask all the important questions. Uh, on council.
Um, play.
Where, whereabouts outside of Philadelphia? Did you live?
Uh, when I moved down initially, I lived in Norristown.
Okay.
And then I moved out to a Lansdale area.
So safe to say you're an Eagles fan?
Well, it.
No.
No. I'm really not a sports fan.
Questions you don't ask during interviews, John.
Right. Uh, and the last, um, municipal budget that you helped prepare, did that have page numbers on it? Sorry, I couldn't help myself. It's an inside joke. Welcome, well, welcome to, welcome to Williamsport.
Thank you.
We're glad to have you aboard.
Thank you.
Mr. Allison.
Yeah, um, yeah, welcome.
Thank you.
You as well. Yeah, I, I I didn't put two and two together when you walked in with Tracy that you were our, our new finance, uh, director. So I, or I would have greeted you in the hallway there, but, um, so I wanted to do that now. And thank you for, um, uh, for coming to Williamsport. Um, I just, uh, wondered, we have a, a treasurer and a controller. Um, did you interact with those offices, uh, in Bloomsburg?
No. No. Oh.
I think.
We didn't interact with, uh, the county government, um, at all.
So, so we have, um, elected officials that, that are very active in the, in the finance area. So, um, I, I'm sure there's, there'll be some intersections you can have with them because, uh, they have knowledge about different parts of the budget and and, uh, things like that, that, um, you can collaborate on actually. So, um, yeah, um, and I'm sure you'll get a, a very sound introduction into everything that, that about Williamsport in our financial situation. Uh, so welcome aboard. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I look forward to working with everybody.
Mrs. Katz.
You know, you're starting at budget time.
I know. It's a glorious time of year.
Exactly. Uh, and it, and I was happy to hear that in Bloomsburg, you started after them in July.
Yes.
Cause we're constantly saying that to all the, the department heads that we want the budget early. And, uh, I, did you stay on their case and for them to hand it into you?
I, I did, I did. It was constant, you know, we were all in one building, so I would go knock on doors and, you know, send emails, phone calls, um, that I needed it. I needed the information.
Fantastic. I'm, I was happy to hear that. Safe trip back and forth from Berwick.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Uh.
And welcome.
Thank you.
Is, is Tracy still here?
She's behind her.
Oh, hey, sorry. I was like, where'd she go? Um, can you, can you, so can you speak a little bit to, I think, the, the transition plan and getting um, her up to speed and, and kind of, um, what, what that all's going to look like between, I think, just, you know, budget process, software, getting specific, specifically intimate with, you know, kind of where we're at fiscally, that kind of stuff?
Certainly. We have the budget worksheets prepared and are preparing to send them to the departments tomorrow. Uh, the meetings then will be scheduled once Ms. Jacoby is able to start so that she can meet everyone, get acclimated with their budgets, and then I'll work with her to take that process forward on her own with a little bit of input, um, as I work towards, uh, finishing the audits and getting the software in place. Of course, she'll be intimately involved with that software implementation for the ownership of that going forward.
Gotcha. Thank you very much. Um, does anybody else have any questions for? Um, I, I, I'm so sorry. You're going to learn about me. I'm awful with names. I remember your face forever, but I'm awful with names. Remind me of your name.
Heather.
Jacoby.
Jacoby.
Jacoby. Thank you. Any more questions for Ms. Jacoby?
I have no relevant questions right now. Other than just to say welcome.
Thank you.
Um, my, my only other questions are for Mayor Slaughter, um, and, and, and none, nothing. They're, they're really more focused on the administrative side and the governance aspect of this. Um, I, and I, well, I'm going to apologize to everybody here for going down this rabbit hole because I know it's boring to a lot of people. I will fully admit that. Um, so this is the Director of Finance and, um, our, our formal department is Finance Administration. Um, is, is, is the way that the department is set up, structured, um, operable per the code, how you envision the office operating moving forward? And, and I ask that because we've had that dialogue publicly. I know you were looking at some things. What, where's that?
Yeah. So this actually came to fruition more quickly than we anticipated. So I am working with Austin White right now. Been working with him. So hopefully in the very near future, we'll bring before City Council our recommendation for the update to the administrative code to have the Director of Finance and the Director of Administration separated. Right now, Ms. Jacoby knows she'll be the Director of Finance, serving that role, uh, which is what we have budgeted in the budget. Uh, we don't have anything for Director of Administration at this time. Uh, we can have that conversation during budget, uh, if that's the administration and councils, uh, wish. Uh, but right now we do want it to serve as Director of Finance and hopefully, hopefully in September, uh, going back and forth with Austin, we have it to a point for council to consider, uh, that update to the administrative code.
Um, what do you envision being different between administration and finance?
Well, the Director of Administration would oversee all of the departments, uh, on a day-to-day basis. They would oversee the operations. So if you have like, I think a Chief of Staff, Director of Administration, that role, so similar. Uh, I guess if you think of like, well, any Director of Administration or Chief of Staff, Director of Finance, I would see overseeing the, the financial uh, responsibilities of the city.
Okay.
So the Chief of Staff would oversee, that'd be right under the mayor overseeing everything.
Gotcha. So you're, you're, you're thinking of a formal, or, or she's a formal, I mean, I'm almost thinking of like, you know, like the felt, like almost like the federal state government kind of structure. If you think about it like, I mean, they all have chiefs of staff, they may, you know.
Or if you think even like at the county, you have the commissioners and then Matt McDermott, that's the Director of Administration. He oversees the day-to-day operations and then they have a finance office.
Okay. Yeah, and I don't. I, I, I need to digest that. That, that's kind of what I was curious about. So that, that's, that's insightful. Um, I, I'm glad to hear that that process is moving forward. Um, and I certainly understand the, um, the timing of getting a candidate versus not having those changes. I would have preferred to see those changes. Um, I know that we've been kind of having this dialogue for four or six months, I feel like off and on. Um, but, you know, nonetheless, um, yeah, it, it's been a while, um, you know. Better, better now than ever, certainly. Um, but, uh, I, I, I personally wish from just a process perspective, we, um, we, we had done this sooner, um, in, in making these changes. So. But uh, nonetheless, I'm glad to hear they're, they're moving. So I'll look forward to seeing that. And don't forget about capital budget either.
We got it.
So. Any other comments or questions related to the um. Item in front of us? Okay. Um, here you can see none. This is Frank on the motion one, um, the Director of Finance appointment.
Mister Allison.
Yes.
Mister Mackey.
Yes.
Mister Pelisi.
Yes.
Mister Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mister Yoder.
No, motion passes six to one. Um, Mister Jacoby, welcome. Um, and that's not at you. So. Um, all right, we will move to item nine. Mrs. Frank.
Resolution authorizing an agreement between the City of Williamsport and Hummer Turf Grass Systems.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second, motion in a second. Mayor Slaughter, welcome again.
Yes, welcome. Uh, good evening again, President Yoder, Vice President Katz. Uh, Members of Council Administration, what you have before you is a resolution. Um, for Hummer Turf Grass Systems uh, to resurface Bowman Field. Uh, speaking with MLB and the folks that are the grounds crew that take care of the field. Um, they made it us aware that it is time uh, for it to be resurfaced, uh, given that it's not been done since the original. Uh. Operations of the MLB Lowly Classic Game, which I believe was twenty sixteen, uh, somewhere in that vicinity. Uh, and so that's what you have before you this evening. It'd be a fifty-fifty cost share. Um, and I believe there is a representative online if there are any technical questions. And this was reviewed in finance.
Finance is correct. Ms. Mealy, was it reviewed in finance?
Uh, this was reviewed in finance. Um, technically speaking, I, I don't think that any of the uh, Finance Committee members had any major questions about the, the field. Its maintenance, et cetera. Um, we did. ascertain that um, seven years, which is how long it's been since we installed the original field, is about the, the maximum that one can anticipate out of a field. Um, like this uh, geared toward major league play. Um, uh, according to one of the gentleman on, on our call, and I apologize for not recollecting his name. Uh, the drainage on the field suffers after a period of time and consequently, a, and you get some uh. Invasive species that begin to grow into the, the turf. Um, that's been the desirous turf, I suppose. Uh, so, so this is about the maximum period of time that we could expect to, to get out of any, out of any field. Um, and uh. Consequently, um, they believe that we should replace it by next spring. I think. Most of the discussion at the Finance Committee level revolved a bit more around uh, who uh. Who is paying for this item as it, as it justly should. Um, currently, a- according to the mayor, there is nothing in. Uh, at least unless you found something, Derek, nothing in the MLB agreement that we executed uh, and then amended, I think, uh, several months ago. Um, that reflects a commitment to cost share between the city and MLB for replacement of the turf. Um, and uh. Um. While obviously field drainage is of some concern, regardless of whether or not it's an MLB uh, caliber playing, playing field, I think. We might be able to safely agree that um, the crosscutters wouldn't require uh. Quite such a, a high standard for the field to be playable as, as the MLB will. Consequently, if we're replacing the field on a seven-year basis, it's partly related to the, the MLB play. Um. That said, uh, as I said, we had a, we had a lot of questions about the, the, the financing of the item. There is sufficient money in our uh. Act thirteen, um, you know, our kind of act thirteen leftovers fund. Um, but uh, that, that doesn't necessarily mean that we want to spend it all in one place. Uh, so Derek, did you get any further insight into how much money exactly there is in there?
One point two.
Okay. Um, and that continues, I know we just authorized and expanded out of that not that long ago. One point two is after everything's been taken out. Okay. Um, all right. Uh, yeah, so that um, if, if we were to delve into my personal. Feelings on the matter, um, it does not seem uh. Entirely fair to me that the city and MLB split this down the middle. Uh, while I don't object to the city having some amount of um, of. You know, uh, skin in this game, it doesn't seem quite fair that, that we should go have these on it when the, the, the standard of the field of four hundred thousand dollar field, I don't believe that we. Ever in my experience before MLB came along, replaced the turf on the field. Um, let alone, you know, that, that we anticipated doing it every seven years. Um, and I'm pretty sure, uh, while I'm sure that the crosscutters are happy to be playing on a. Major league caliber field. Um, uh, I, I don't think that that would be something that would be uh, an element of our contract with them. If it were not for the, for the major league play happening on that field. Um, uh, so for, for me personally, um. I, I struggle with the, with the price of it. Uh, but I will be glad to hear some other members of council and how we all feel about that.
Thank you, Ms. Mealy. Any other? Comments from members of council? Mister, uh, Mister Pelisi.
I, I just want to step in and say I, I share Councilwoman Mealy sentiments uh, about who's going to. Be paying for all of this. Um. And you know, like she said, the, the cutters, I'm sure love playing on that, but um. At the cost of it, even if we split it down the middle, it's a hundred and ninety-one, just shy of a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars.
Hmm.
Um, that we didn't have, that we didn't figure that we, we'd have budgeted for this. So. Um. With that, I, I would just say, I think that this item should be tabled for further discussion. Now, I see Melissa's hand up. I probably have something else to say, but that's my opinion is that they should be tabled.
Ms. Mill, you had additional?
Oh, I would certainly agree with the table motion. Um, but I would also say that if we look. Uh. If we, if we look at, there's, there is a contribution stipulated by contract from MLB to the city on an annual basis as a result of hosting the game. Um, but that contribution, once one subtracts, um, the number of services that the city actually puts into the game. Right? Oh, did they stop it entirely? Not to.
Yeah.
Okay, right. Um, anyway, right, so. Obviously for us to be helping to maintain the field to MLB standard, right?
Yeah.
And yes, I did. Sorry, Bonnie. Been doing this too long.
Mrs. Katz.
Just to answer a question was about the field before MLB came, um, it was a mess. I, I will tell you truthfully, and I think. Randy, you can attest to that too. I think you were part of that and being on the Bowman Field Commission. Um. And they were trying to get funding and, and the owners of, of the crosscutters, they really wanted us to put money into that field. It was a blessing when MLB came because there was no way that we as the city could afford that to begin with. So MLB with the field is a blessing, but it's also a curse. Um. MLB has the uh, total say on who plays on that field. Um. We were getting seventy-five thousand dollars a year from them because of the inconvenience at times uh, from MLB. Uh, the disruption with the cross cutter games and other, other factions. Um, again, like I said, MLB has been a blessing and a curse. Um. Why at this point they're asking us for money for the field? Um. Where we, before MLB came, we struggled along with the field and did the best we could. In fact, streets and parks would take care of us as much as they could with the cutters. Wasn't the cutters before, I think it was the, the Bill Williamsport.
Yeah.
Bills.
Yeah.
Um, and you know, to, to go through this process now, I, I just don't understand it. They took, take away what they were giving us to begin with, and now they want half of the payment for a field. So I think I would like to see this table to find out why they are doing this.
Is there a motion in a sec? Uh, Ms. Mealy.
Last question. Um. Does the, the, the maintenance firm that was on the call on Tuesday, who's paying for that service? Cause I no longer remember whether that's us.
Yeah, that, no, that's not us. Yeah, MLB covers the grounds crew.
Okay, good. Um, at least, at least that, that, that was my recollection because I didn't see the, the money coming out of the city's budget, but. Yeah, still, anyway, um, yes, if MLB is paying to maintain the field and MLB, then yeah. Anyway, I would be, I would be a fan of tabling it too. Thanks.
Mister Mackey.
Uh, not a question, just I.
This is of the last country.
As of this most recent game. Is that, yeah, okay. Sorry, I just wanted to clarify that for the public. If I had a hard time hearing, I'm guessing. Somebody else did.
Thank you, Mister Mackey. Any other comments or questions before we kind of go through the procedural process?
No, I would make a motion to table.
Is there a second? Motion in a second? Any final comments or questions on the motion to table? I would just say, yeah, I think it's, I think we need to have a, a conversation with MLB, um, Derek. And I think a couple of us would like to be a part of that as well. So, um, we can kind of coordinate that here in the, in the next couple of days. Um, and then see where we go. So. Um, motion a second to table, Mrs. Frank on the motion to table.
Mister Allison.
Yes.
Mister Mackey.
Yes.
Mister Pelisi.
Yes.
Mister Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mister Yoder.
Yes, motion to table passes seven zero. Um, Ma- Mayor, you're up there. Well, I'll knock out your, we'll knock out your third one here. Um, item eight, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution to approve the twenty twenty-three James David Robinson Cultural Arts Grant Program.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second, motion in a second. Your slaughter.
Yes, good evening once again, President Yoder, Vice President Katz, Members of Council Administration. What you have before you is the twenty twenty-three James David Robinson Cultural Grant. As you all are aware, each year we have three thousand dollars uh, that needs to be allocated uh, to various organizations in the community. Um, and this year, we had five organizations, Community Arts Center. Williamsport Symphony Orchestra, Repass Band of Williamsport, Bald Eagle Art League and Billtown Blues Association. And it was the recommendation uh, to fund each of these organizations equally. Uh, as I believe Councilwoman Mealy says regularly, three thousand dollars is not that much, but at least it's something. Um, that we're able to assist these organizations uh, with some of their events. And so it's a recommendation with that three thousand to give each organization six hundred dollars as part of this program. And this was reviewed in finance.
Thank you, Mayor Slaughter. Ms. Mealy, finance?
Yeah, very limited discussion on this item.
Yeah.
But I think that we were all, uh, I, I, I believe there was a general consensus that uh, the money had been divided proportionately. And that the organizations would hopefully be able to see some utility from it.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions related to this item? All right, here you can see none. Mrs. Frank on the motion for item eight.
Mister Allison.
Yes.
Mister Mackey.
Yes.
Mister Pelisi.
Yes.
Mister Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mister Yoder.
Yes, motion passes seven zero. We'll jump back up to item five, Mrs. Frank.
An ordinance in second reading, final reading, transfer ordinance number three.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second, motion in a second, Mister Mackey, not the council type. Good evening, sir. Thanks for your patience.
This is a ten thousand dollar transfer to the automation budget. We had an additional. Costs that went out that we needed to cover, and then the county had also helped us out with some, so this is to kind of reimburse them for that. I can answer any questions in regards to this answer.
All right. Thank you, Mister Mackey. This is second reading, pass first reading, nothing's changed. Any comments or questions on second reading? All right, here you can see none. This is Frank on second reading, item five.
Mister Allison.
Yes.
Mister Pelisi.
Yes.
Mister Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mister Yoder.
Yes, motion passes six zero, item six, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution real estate refund on Maynard Street.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second, motion in a second, Mister Mackey.
This is a resolution to give a refund for the reassessment of the twenty-two taxes to CS Hospitality LLC. Uh, by court order and resolution nine six six three uh, approved May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, the city recognized a reassessment of the property from three point one million dollars down to two point eight million dollars. So this is going to give them a refund in the amount of. Five thousand, five thousand two hundred and twenty-one dollars and seventy cents.
Thank you, Mister Mackey. Any comments or questions on the refund? By members? Mrs. Katz.
Do you know, it would be wonderful if the county would do a reassessment. Uh, we keep on giving refunds for, for companies, businesses, homeowners. That ask for our reassessment and we're giving money back. Um, how many people are reassessed and we should be getting money from them? And this is what's frustrating right now. So I, it's just a statement. It's nothing else but a statement.
Okay. To my knowledge, the county hasn't done a county-wide reassessment since two thousand and four.
Right.
Correct. So I think we're quite a few years out of date from that.
Yeah, well, a- as, as much as this soapbox I'll get on, and I completely agree, the sad thing is that they're actually middle of the pack compared to most counties in Pennsylvania. Which is even scarier. So. Yeah, there's some stuff the county needs to do, but the state legislature needs to step up as well, not only here, but with a handful of things. So. Anyway. You're right, Bonnie.
Just statements.
Yep. Any other comments or questions from members of council? All right, here you can see none. Mrs. Frank on the motion for item six.
Mister Allison.
Yes.
Mister Mackey.
Yes.
Mister Pelisi.
Yes.
Mister Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mister Yoder.
Yes, motion passes seven zero. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
We'll move to item ten, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution authorizing listing and marketing agreements between the Williamsport Bureau of Fire and Brindle Mountain Fire Apparatus.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second, motion in a second. Chief, Assistant Chief, welcome, gentlemen.
Good evening, President Yoder, Members of Council, Administration. What you have before you tonight is a resolution authorizing listing and marketing agreements between the Williamsport Bureau of Fire and Brinley Mountain Fire Apparatus. Uh, to advertise nationwide for the sale of four apparatus, three pumppers in a area. Uh, what we did is we had them give us an appraisal of the apparatus we're selling of the high end and low end. And we're going, starting at the high end to advertise. So uh, their, their commission is listed here in the resolution. And this was reviewed at Public Safety and Austin White.
Thank you, Assistant Chief Lucas. Mister Mackey, Public Safety?
Yeah, this was um, reviewed in Public Safety. Uh, again, I'm sure we're all aware that. We purchased three new trucks with uh, primarily ARPA money, but there were some other that came out of, uh, was it CDGB? Yeah. Um, so these are the three trucks that we will. Very soon no longer need. Um. And as Assistant Chief Lucas did state, we can expect to see anywhere between six hundred and ninety thousand. To a little over a million dollars if, if, and I'm assuming when we sell these trucks. Um, and obviously, we just want to get this process started now. So that when we do get our new trucks delivered, I believe the first, the, the ladder truck will be here in March.
Correct.
And the other two pumppers will be here in uh.
About this time next year.
About this time next year. Uh, the, the idea with the sale of these trucks will be to then go out. And purchase a fourth quint truck, which is essentially a pumper with a ladder on it. This will be a used vehicle. Um. We have, uh, I shouldn't say we, the fire department has already looked at one. Very similar to the, to what you're hoping to get once we sell these vehicles. That's going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of three hundred thousand dollars. And then the rest of this money will get put towards um, the general fund to hopefully put us, start to put us in a position in. Fifteen or twenty years when we need to buy new trucks. If we can keep that. Cycle going, we hopefully will never get into a situation where. We don't have money for new trucks when we need them. So um, I do have one question. Um. And again, it's, it's been a while since I've done, I'll, I'll open it up to the other members of Public Safety. I do have one question, but I'll defer to Bonnie and Vince first.
Um, I, I do have one question. Um, on behalf of probably most men everywhere, how much does a used ladder truck cost?
Well, the one we're looking at, like he said, it's going to be about three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand.
Okay, and then the used one that we're looking to sell? Uh, we have any idea what we think we can get for that?
We're going to advertise it for. Five hundred and fifteen thousand.
Yeah, that's out of my price range.
My way for killing me. Okay. Thank you. I have no more important questions.
I don't have any question. So John, you're, it's open to you.
Okay, yeah. I went back and just looked through these um, agreement of sale here with, with, it's Brindley, that's how you pronounce it.
Brinley, yeah.
And I, I, I see the percentages here. You know, what they take once we do sell the vehicle. I'm assuming. There's no, I mean, there's always a chance. there's no, I mean, there's always a chance. Is there any chance that we wouldn't sell any of these vehicles?
There's always that chance.
Right. So if that doesn't happen, do we owe Brindley any money? I didn't, I, unless I missed it, I didn't see that.
Well, their, their commission is off the sale, so.
Yeah, but much like say, uh, a, an auction, if a minimum bid isn't met, sometimes the person who set that minimum bid still owes the auction company their ten percent. I'm just using that as a nice round. It, it, that, I guess what I'm asking, that's not the case here.
I don't think so. I, I will double check that.
I, I would pr- prefer if you, if we had that information, just, just to be safe. I, like I said, I don't think, I, I mean, I don't think that these won't sell, but.
Any other comments or questions?
Uh, Chief Sam said that they did make the statement that if it didn't sell, there would be no fee.
Okay.
Mr. Byder.
Obviously, we, we don't have, we're not going to have some uh new fire trucks to replace this um for a little while. What would happen should these trucks get put uh on the market and then they sell by December?
Well, we're, we're going to have it listed available uh when we get the new.
So it'll, it'll be, the brakes will be popped on that.
Yeah.
So to speak then. Um, are we responsible for delivery fees, anything like that? It's, it's up to the, the buyer to come pick it up or have it shipped, so on.
Everything's on the buyer. Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Here you can see none. Mrs. Frank on the motion for item ten.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Uh, we'll move to item seventeen certificates appropriateness for Harb. Um, Skip, thank you for your patience also. Um, six thirty-five Gray Street. Um, some work on a stone fortress, um, and ten fifty-two, ten fifty-four Vine Ave, Mr. Mark Marino. Um, is there a motion and a second for these certificates of appropriateness from Harb?
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. Um, Skip, anything you care to add, commentary, anything?
The only thing that I'll add to, to what you've already been presented is the um property for six thirty-five Gray Street. We have, the Harb Committee approved the roofing materials and colors. They have asked the applicant to appear at the Harb meeting to better explain how they were going to address the downspouts and the gutters. They hadn't, they were not present at the prior meeting, but so that was just something to bring to your attention that they will be coming back with the gutters at the next meeting. Once, once we better understand what they're looking to do and what types of materials they're going to be using. It was too vague for the committee to make a decision on that. They understood this, the shingle issue, but they needed more clarification on the gutters. That's all I have, sir.
Yeah. Any comments or questions based on Skip's feedback or?
I mean, I just, I have a general comment, but I can wait till we're done with both of them. I.
So this is being approved then without the gutters being approved by Harb?
And if you look at the certificate of occupancy, it does say that on there.
Okay.
He to further clarify
Okay.
the gutter system, the, the agenda item more or less misspoke, and I'll take the blame for that.
Ms. Mealy.
So just for the record, we are approving the installation of the shingle roof, not approving installation of downspouts.
Correct.
Okay, there we go. Okay, I didn't. A vote, a vote of yes approves the installation of the shingle group and not the downspouts.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, any other comments or questions in, in that nature? I have a couple comments as well.
I guess, I mean, I'm, I'm looking, I am looking at this property on Google Maps. And I am just curious, so the, 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 the drainage of the downspouts that are currently on the house are not okay, or they're, they're supposed to replace them exactly how they are now, or?
They, they need to be, according to the application, they need to be repaired and, and uh, the method of how they were going to be repaired was a question that the Harb Committee had.
Right.
But the applicant wasn't present at the meeting, so they were able to define the shingles and, and uh asked the applicant to show up at the next meeting to uh, to address the gutters.
Yeah, I, again, I we've been down this road before, not Gray Street specifically.
Well, you would, well, so.
And then Adam, Councilman, Councilman Yoder and I have, uh, we took actually half a day and toured the entire historic district again. I, I would love, I mean, again, I would love for somebody to explain to me that ignores the historical significance of Gray Street itself in that we have here we have a citizen trying to fix up their house and they're they're having a, they're, they're having to go through all these extra hoops to do it, um, because they live on Gray Street.
And, and, and if I recall, I mean, I don't have the map that we drew up that, that together, John, but um, from what I recall, that section specifically, I mean, I don't recall much historical um value there at all. If anything, I mean, that's a specific area that I think that this Harb um District actually, I think, pushes the, the um, the value of those, it makes it harder for, for the, the nature um of property that is there. Um, and I don't think it's a good thing. I mean, I see Chief Bong, sorry to put you on the spot, shaking your head. Um, I'm guessing he's thinking, yeah, that would probably make my life a little bit easier too, right? Um, Skip, I know that we are in the process of updating the ordinance. Um, a couple of things that I'm hoping to see in that, that I think we've all kind of talked about. Um, and that Councilman Mackey and I have specifically tried before, um, and were of the impression after that initial effort that we couldn't do. Um, if we can get some kind of a tiered system potentially, I don't know if that's part of it or not, we'll find out, um, where something like this is a lot easier. Um, or frankly, can we amend the map? Now, and I say that, there are areas of the historic district that no question absolutely should be there. It's, it's, it's applicable, but there's areas of that map that I can't see historical nature of it um, to where I think they could be taken out, for example. So um, and the consultant working on updating that ordinance has a copy of that.
He does have a copy of that.
He knows the work that you and I did together, John. Um, I, I'm, I don't know where that's at, but I would love to hear from them when they get to that point, what that looks like, if that's feasible, if so, how?
Hopefully, at the September meeting of the Harb Board, McKissick will be presenting the first draft of the proposed changes to the ordinance so that it can be reviewed by Harb. And then we can come to council or have a meeting with council to discuss some of the changes that are being proposed within that ordinance. And, and maybe at that point in time, we can streamline this process because I agree that two to three months to get approval for a project is a long time. We need to come up with a better way to help our citizens be able to do their projects, especially here in the northeast where the building or the, the construction season is about six, seven months. If it was a year-long construction season, it would be not a big deal to be delayed for two months.
Yeah.
Uh, it's my goal to streamline that and hopefully to get some of these changes that you are suggesting potentially implement. Uh, where we're at right now, I can't say I have specific answers to them, but you have been heard by McKissick and we're working to that end.
The other thing I would add, and I think regardless of the direction that the ordinance change goes, I mean, we, we really need to utilize that historic district, whether it changes or not, let's get some outside money. And let's put it into that district, right? And regardless of the nature of the house, um, regardless of you know, who owns it, whatever. I mean, there's a huge opportunity that we are missing. Um, and so Skip, Mayor Slaughter, um, move. Now, right? I mean, I, I would talk to Keller and Delta tomorrow and get that moving. Regardless of how that goes, that's something we don't need to wait on. Ms. Mealy.
Um, I would say that I think streamlining the hard process is paramount because yes, you should not be penalized in terms of losing an entire building season for um, you know, because you have an historic property. On the other hand, I would disagree strongly, obviously, with dropping elements out of the district. I would agree with the concept of a historic overlay and other parts of the city on historic structures that we have. Not on all, not on all structures, but on historic structures elsewhere in the city. And we have an existing list of those um, that was made by um, the Committee on Historic Preservation several years ago. Um, uh, so I would certainly be a fan of that. Um, but, but yes, I think that the, the, the hard process has become relatively antiquated. And while it is great that we have um antiquated structures within the city that we are protecting, it is not uh as ideal to have antiquated processes with which we are protecting them. But um, but I would say that Vine Avenue actually is, is exceptionally valuable from a historic perspective because those would have been the houses of the people working in the houses along Third and Fourth Street. So you've got a valuable history. The comparison between the two actually is quite valuable.
Yeah, and it's, I don't mean to cut you off. Sorry, I, I, I'm more top of Gray Street. Um.
Oh, yeah, well.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I, I would agree. I, I, I'll try to dig up the map we put together and send it to you. I mean, that area was, from what we, I recall, like, yeah, I mean.
Right. But i- if we were, if we were looking into funding for the historic district, I would say something that it could desperately use as something we put money into elsewhere in the city with far, to far less effect, I think. The historic district actually could use streetscape. Um, uh, you know what I mean? Uh, we, the, the, the structures themselves, the homeowners could, could certainly use a grant program. But we do have a, a small one in place within the city that isn't currently being utilized, um, which says to me that perhaps that's not necessarily the stumbling block depending. Um, unless we're not publicizing that while we're making it easily available. But um, but I think something like the city putting some funding, uh, you know, if we, if we could achieve funding and put it into streetscape, it would go a long way toward encouraging property owners to keep their properties up a little better down there because um I mean, honestly, the cost of a sidewalk is what, five or six thousand minimum, you know, property? And that's money that you can't really build into your rents and can't really, you know, and um, and that would give the district a unified look that would help to convey that it was something that Williamsport valued um, as a, as a um, city. And we have not ever really done that within the district. Um, and I, I think that is something that could, that could add a lot of value there. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Mealy.
Mr. Chairman, if I can address, like, Councilwoman Mealy's, there is been some discussion about looking at an overlay district for other historic properties around the city. So that is being discussed. And also one of the tasks for McKissick is to provide us with different grant programs that we might be able to utilize to provide some level of funding for different projects within the city. So that'll all be coming to you here before the end of the year.
Great. Excellent. Any other comments or questions on the certificates of appropriateness? We got into a rabbit hole. Sorry, but I think a good one, an appropriate one.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, here you see none. Mrs. Frank on uh the motion for the certificate of, certificates of appropriateness, excuse me.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. We are not missing anything.
Thank you.
Thank you, Skip. May I, why neither? Perfect. Um, item eighteen, except for filing, we have the Finance Committee meeting minutes from April eleventh, April twenty-fifth and May ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. Controllers report from June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. Economic revitalization meeting minutes from March first, two thousand and twenty-three. Water and sanitary authority minutes from July twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three. Is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. Any comments, questions on the minutes we're filing? Here you see none. Mrs. Frank on the motion for except for filing, please.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. Item eighteen announcements. Our next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be in two weeks, Thursday, September fourteenth, seven P M. Right here, Trade and Transit Two. Upcoming meetings, um, Monday, September fourth is Labor Day. Um, City Hall will be closed. Um, Tuesday, September fifth, twelve P M. Planning Commission, Tuesday, September twelfth, eleven thirty, and Public Safety, one P M. Finance, two thirty P M. Public Works. Wednesday, September thirteenth, nine A M. Economic revitalization, three thirty P M. O N E Pension. Thursday, September fourteenth, the seven P M. Is our next city council meeting. Um, are there any comments from members of council on anything tonight? Mister, or Ms. Scott, sorry.
Just to remind everybody, tomorrow is first Friday downtown. Come down and have fun.
And support our local downtown and businesses, absolutely. Any other comments or questions from members of council? Mr. Mackey?
Uh, a couple, actually, we should, you'll bear with me here for a second. Uh, Mr. Mayor, just one, a couple of questions for you. Um, as far as paving goes, could we get an update on where we're at with that? Um, just kind of a list. The roads, the streets that have been done, streets that have been done.
Yeah.
Yeah, still, still need to get done.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I just, I've had a couple of people ask me where, where we're at in that process.
Yeah, and I've had a couple of people that have a couple of nice sized issues on their roads and see if they can get squeaked in if we have any room. So that would be good to know. I don't know, I'm just.
Yeah, um, as far as like the, the city, like what the city does, uh, I don't have that list. Um, as far as the contracted workout for Hall Baker, that's starting in October.
Okay, so they're starting in October.
Yep, yep. They'll mo- they'll move in. Right now they're doing, um, Big Rock is working a sub under them for ADA uh sidewalks right now. They're in we're on Moser Ave and uh Newbury just as of two days ago. So they're moving through there and then they'll come in in October.
Okay. Great, thank you. Um, Mr. Mayor, the next question I have for you is, and I, I, again, I know it's getting late, folks. But I just feel like these are some things I want to put out there. I didn't get an opportunity to do it on Tuesday night. So I feel like it's important because we do have a vote coming up here in two weeks. I know we all um are aware of that, but, Mr. Mayor, I'm just going to ask you a yes or no question. Does, does your administration have any intentions of moving back into City Hall?
No.
No. Okay. With that being said, um, I do want to just state for the record and Norm, please feel free to chime in if, if you feel like I'm saying something that's not correct. Uh, City Council does not have the authority to force the administration to move back into City Hall. The mayor's just made it very clear that he has no intention of moving back into City Hall. So what are our options? Uh, and if you forgive me, I, I wrote some of this down. We have two. Um, one, we sit on an almost empty forty thousand square foot building and continue to waste taxpayer dollars to maintain it. Or two, we sell it to someone who has the ability to repair it while maintaining its historic external features and even some of its internal ones as well. That's one of my thoughts. The, my second thought is generally speaking, I, it's unfortunate that city council meetings are not set up really for an open dialogue. You know, it's a series of statements and a lot of times when statements are made, there's no rebuttal, there's no follow-up. And I feel like sometimes there are statements that are made that simply aren't accurate. And if they are not followed up on, that inaccurate information somehow just becomes truth. And I'll speak to one specifically um from Tuesday night. Um, in late twenty twenty-one, after the city's ad hoc committee wrapped up their study, the firm of Eastlake Dairy and Associates LLC performed an ADA, that's Americans with Disabilities Act site review of Trade and Transit Center One, Trade and Transit Center Two, the River Valley Transit Authority Building, the now River Valley Transit Authority Building, Transportation Museum in City Hall. This report was publicly presented to City Council and is readily available for anyone who wishes to read it. The report includes a thirty-one page spreadsheet of everything that is they're not suggestions, these are required, required to be fixed, altered, repaired, or completely redone to make the building ADA compliant under Title II of the Americans with Disabilities Act. Of that thirty-one page spreadsheet, the repairs at City Hall make up nineteen pages. That is sixty-one percent the repairs at City Hall make up nineteen pages. That is sixty-one percent of the total document. Um, one of our constituents stated on Tuesday night, and this is verbatim, I went back and watched the video four times to make sure that I had it exactly correct. From a technical standpoint, on accessibility, certainly City Hall is handicapped accessible. For the most part, there are some small technical issues or minor minor technical issues that should be addressed. Let me just give you three of the highlights or maybe lowlights, if you will, from this spreadsheet. According to that spreadsheet, almost every bathroom in the building would need the following work. And this is a direct quote from the report. The restroom is inaccessible in its entirety and would require major renovations, including possible relocation of bearing walls, plumbing roughens, electrical and mechanical system failures. All finishes within the restroom will need to be replaced due to age and unavailability. City Hall would require an entirely new and larger elevator, quote, provide an elevator having at least the minimum dimensions required with a center door, the minimum width would be eighty inches and the minimum, the minimum depth would be fifty-four inches. As to the current elevator, another quote, elevator leveller is just scary. Very small car dimensions, forty-eight inches deep, seventy-three eight inches wide. That's a not just a new elevator, that's a new larger elevator. Again, directly from the port, uh, the report, the other major issue at City Hall that will have to be addressed before the building provides services to the public is the fire alarm system. Currently, there appears to be dilapidated old audible system red bell, but no visual alarms are provided in the building to warn people with hearing-related disabilities of danger. Visual alarms will require a major update, including in-wall wiring and a new master panel for the alarm system. And again, these are just three examples of the nineteen pages of work that needs to be done at City Hall. The report ends with the following statement that was underlined, no less. In summary, T T one, T T two, R V T, and the museum buildings can all be very accessible with attention given to the few items pointed out in this report. In our opinion, the City Hall building would have to undergo a very large investment in remediation projects with marginal outcomes for better accessibility. Marginal outcomes. This is a huge commitment of resources for marginal outcomes. City Hall is the people's building, yes. Then every single person should have the ability to use it. And I would just like again to point out that City Council moved out of City Hall in January of twenty twenty. In after only two meetings uh, in my current tenure here as a city council member, and we we moved out of City Hall. Not because of mold, there was no mold there in January twenty twenty. It was because that building is not ADA compliant. That is why we left. I did try to say that Tuesday night and I didn't have the opportunity. So again, we have uh, a decision before us in two weeks. And that is to sell City Hall or not. So I mean, I I guess that's that's about all I have to say tonight, but I would just uh implore everyone up here to to really get the questions that they still have answered. And really think about what I just said. That we can't force them to go back into City Hall. So in my, in my, in my uh, humble opinion, as I said, we have two choices. Um, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey. If I may follow up on that with one question um, and just two comments for the mayor. Um, so Mayor Slaughter, you said you have no intention of going back. Um, can I ask why?
That's right now, I don't feel like that uh, is an option of going back there.
Um, my my two asks, um, I think a handful of us have reached out um, and just ask for particular information, Mayor. Um, you and I talked earlier today. Um, I I know you're working on a number of that. Um, I'm uh, grateful for that and thank you for that. Um, please continue to do so. My second ask is that you have a plan um, be prepared to articulate to us on what we are going to do um in preparation for our vote when we vote. Um, yeah, I think at least for me, um, that's been the the thing that um, I have not been able to wrap my head around as far as what we are going to do. Um, we've openly talked about this being temporary. Um, you know, I I don't know concretely what that is. Um, and I and I would ask that you um articulate that to us um, in two weeks' time. I know that there's been informal discussions about things. Um, I don't know what progress has been made. We've all openly talked about the question of the police that came up, both from the public's um, comments as well as kind of what we were roughly talking about as well. Um, it and that's always been a um, intricate piece of this puzzle. Um, and so I think it would be helpful to understand what the long-term plan of that is as well, but I just would ask. Um, please communicate that um, at our next meeting. Um, and uh, I'll be anxious to hear what that looks like. Ms. Mealy.
If I can make one addition to that request, um, I'd like to see in that plan, um, the the reasons why the administration feels that returning to City Hall is not a viable option. Because simply saying that it's not an option does not, to me, really explain um, why that is the case. And if we have other options, the administration feels that they are options, I'd like to understand why those are options and City Hall is not.
Thank you, Ms. Mealy. Not a fair ask. Any other comments from members of council? Mr. Pelosi.
Yeah. Uh, thank you. Well, just to kind of add on to what you have mentioned and and what Liz has mentioned. And I know it's a tall ask, so if we can just get even some rough ideas, rough estimates. Mr. Mayor. Uh, being the numbers guy, I'm curious as to with the plan, what the proposed cost might be. Of course, I know that there's nothing that we can get extreme detail on costs, but just an idea of with the plan, what it's going to cost and what kind of impact it's going to have to our taxpayers. So that's my only request. Thank you.
Any other comments for members of council? Any comments from the administration? Any comments from the public? Mr. Huffman, welcome. Uh, podium is yours. Um, and you have three minutes, sir. Can you hit the mic, please? Yeah, that's okay.
Good evening, Council. First, I'd just like to say that I hope I hope we all, everyone in this room uh, takes a little time this weekend to uh, it's called Labor Day, you're take a rest from your labor. So I hope we all take a a little break and enjoy the weekend. Supposed to be great weather. Um, secondly, uh, since you all were making some asks, um, I thought maybe I could just ask a quick ask. Um, and I don't know if the mayor can ask, answer this or Mr. Yoder, but you know that um some of my fellow taxpayers and I sent a letter uh, a little over two weeks ago, asking for a a formal uh, opinion on why the city feels it does not um have to follow the Donated and Dedicated Property Act. Now, I believe we asked for a response in about fourteen days, which I think today is the fourteenth day. Um, I don't know if you're prepared to give that tonight, or you can just maybe let us know when we might expect that. It would be greatly appreciated.
You want to take that, Mayor?
I talked to this listener today and he is working on a response to it. So you should have that in the not-too-distant future.
Okay, great.
Bruce, to be specific, um, I was told this week. So um I would expect that by the end of the day tomorrow. I'm not trying to put words in their mouth, but that's what was communicated to me Tuesday.
Okay, great. Thanks. Appreciate that.